To Alison, who's on the Police Liaison Committee. And she had details of that reported back to her from the Sector Inspector. Apparently it's quite an unusual event.
My understanding from the Sector Inspector is that they are not concerned that it will affect the wider public, but they are not prepared to give any further details at this time.
No, I was going to say that that's because he apprehended the bloke within 35 minutes. And apparently he came from the wastelands of the north, Manchester and whatever. And apparently there's something, who knows what happens in West End Court. But hey, there we go.
Well, so I think that's all we can say about it at this moment. councillor Barnes?
Thank you. Yes, good evening, Chair. I did complain at the time because I thought as a local member I should have been contacted by the police, as this was certainly for Redruth, a major incident. And I had an email now from Jo, the sector, I think she's a sector inspector or something, saying that in future they'll try and keep me better informed. But looking at this Police Liaison Group, which is what we seem to be doing, it looks like they ought to buy in farewell cards because it looks like as soon as they come in, they can't wait to get out. I know Campbell doesn't have a very good reputation in Cornwall, but most of them just seem to be coming and going as quick as they can. And we need to get some people who are going to stop and try and do something for the town rather than just do a bit and then get promoted and go.
Anybody else got anything they want to say? councillor Bisco? councillor Thomas?
Yeah, I just want to tag on to what Stephen has just said about the inconsistency, I guess, of the Sector Inspector. We've probably had more Sector Inspectors than some of us have had hot dinners. But it occurs to me that when Billy joined us, of course, he gave us a real assurance, built some confidence up about his longevity. And he actually said he was staying in the Campbell and Redruth sector until the day he retired. And of course, he failed to deliver on that as well. I have mentioned previously to the sectors inspectors about the enormous stress that our police officers are under. And I think a fact have offered in the past to riot either on behalf of the town council or through the town council and the community network, I guess, an appeal about staffing resources for local police. And it just strikes me that these people of high office come into position and then find out how difficult it is. And perhaps some haven't got very good coping strategies. So I don't know what we can do about it, but it does strike me that the turnover that we have in terms of police inspectors is unacceptable. Thank you.
Right, councillor Allenbrook?
Just very briefly, Chair, I know that Billy McWhorter was promoted and moved on. And I think we have to be mindful of the fact that if you've got good officers, they will get promoted and they will get moved around. I do agree that we do need some consistency, but I do have to say, Jo Shields seems to have picked up very quickly on what Billy McWhorter promised us, which is there has been a huge amount of work done on the things that are really concerning us in Redruth, which are basically the drug situation and also antisocial behaviour. And I think whilst it's regrettable that officers seem to move around so quickly, there is a consistency and Jo Shields has been very clear that she is going to carry on the work that Billy did. And it could well be that other sectors in Cornwall have exactly the same turnover. As I say, you cannot stop good people being promoted. It's the name of the game.
councillor Bisco? You're muted, Henry.
I'd echo that with Barbara. The new Sector Inspector has contacted Alison, who's the Police Liaison Committee member, and has kept her up to date with things and even sent her emails, especially about the recent incident outside Betfred, where some poor fella got his leg punctured. And she looks forward to dealing with her in the future.
Okay. So it's recommended that the report is noted, so unless anyone's got anything else. Okay, thank you. Item seven is to receive reports from the Cornwall Council Ward members on their work within the Redruth parish. There is an attached report from councillor Ellenbrook, so we'll take that one first, please. Has anybody got any questions for Barbara? Barbara, do you want to speak?
No, just to say that the call-in that we did on the extra care housing was dismissed by the monitoring officer, so that is likely to go ahead. That's, I'm disappointed but unsurprised, as indeed are my colleagues. But apart from that, that's it.
Anybody else got anything they want to ask or add? Okay, thank you, Barbara, we'll note that. councillor Tom, do you have something you want to say?
Yes, my apologies, Chair. The clerk did invite me to submit a report, which I did unfortunately at the late hour on Friday. I noticed that it hadn't been distributed to members, so prior to this meeting, I've distributed it. Hopefully it'll make interesting reading. Thank you.
Okay, I have to, when did you submit it, Ian?
Sorry, you're breaking up. What did you say?
When was it you submitted it?
I sent it on Friday to the clerk and then today, I don't know, it might have been as late as half past five.
Oh, I haven't. Okay. I'm guessing if anyone's got any questions about it, they'll forward them on to you. councillor Barnes?
I've been attending all my statutory meetings and I've been going out meeting a lot of residents who were mostly concerned about speeding. And I've also had a lot of issues regarding planning applications. And but the speeding is the big thing which seems to be getting to a lot of people. We've been at County Council, have been trying to discuss, trying to bring in, turning the 30 zones into 20 mile zones, but I think the government's too busy to actually bother with local councils. But it is something that we are trying to pursue. And carrying on from what Barbara said, I've got a meeting tomorrow with Mel O'Sullivan, a virtual meeting. And I've asked for my deputy group leader, Jane Kurran, to join me in that meeting. And I intend to raise again the business of about scrutiny at Cornwall Council, especially as the controlling group controls the cabinet and the scrutiny meetings. I think they should relax the scrutiny call-in procedure because basically it's almost a dictatorship run in Cornwall Council. So unless they're going to try and be seen to be fair, they're going to be seen to be unfair. So we're going to have another crack at that tomorrow lunchtime about half past one.
Okay, has anybody got any questions for councillor Barnes? councillor Ellenbrook?
Yeah, could you be appreciated if you could let us know what the result of that meeting was? Stephen, thank you.
Well, yeah, that's tomorrow, half past one.
Yeah, as I say, if you could just share when you've finished, that would be very illuminating, I feel sure. Thank you.
Well, if you're home tomorrow, you might hear me shouting.
councillor Garrick? Colin, you've got your hand up?
Got unmute, Colin.
Apologies, madam Chair. Yeah, Steve, your report is very, very good. Regarding the speeding issue, I think the idea of a 20 mile an hour speed limit, in theory, sounds very, very good. In practice, it's rather difficult to implement. I mean, I have to say that the standard of driving since lockdown's kind of eased off. I mean, I've been appalled by it really. It just seems like people have just kind of forgotten how to drive. And I think speeding is a real, real issue. So if you need any help, Stephen, on that one, please contact me.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, has anybody else got any questions?
councillor Broad?
Yes.
Yep.
You hear me, Stephen?
Yeah.
I'm just asking if there's any update on the reinstating of the WLO lines up Nettles Hill New Cut Car Park?
Well, I did email Geoff Brown, who told me what his interpretation of what he thought our meeting was. And it's nothing like the interpretation that I had. And also Adrian Drake said it wasn't his interpretation either. And I think when Charlotte speaks in a minute, she might be able to update a bit more as well.
It's been slightly less of a problem since LC Gym has closed, but it's still a problem. It's quite dangerous though, really.
Yeah. It's strange, all these people go to these keep fit clubs, but none of them will walk.
No, no.
You get the one up at Station Road at Poole and they'll park on the pavement rather than walk.
Well, that's it, it needs looking at because it's quite a dangerous corner there.
I have been on to him, but I'm hoping Charlotte might be able to update us a bit more on this in a minute.
The old middle auto equipped shop is being turned into flats as well, four flats. So that's going to be extra parking there, isn't it?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay, councillor Brown?
Yes, thank you. Just a point of information unrelated to councillor Barnes' report. I've just been speaking with the Community Projects Manager with regard to the live stream on Facebook. And we're going to quit on that at the moment because it's been very unsuccessful, unfortunately. But we'll arrange a separate practice to make sure we can iron out the kings so that it actually shares the screen. But I just thought I'd let you all know, we're not on Facebook, but this is still being recorded, so still best behaviour, please.
And then we're recording it and then it will be put up as soon as Peter sent me the recording on Facebook. I'm ever so sorry, but we need to have a practice run with more than me and Georgie, so we will try again.
Okay, thank you. Has anybody else got anything else for councillor Barnes? No, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item eight is to receive a report from the Community Link Officer, Miss Charlotte Caldwell, whose report is attached. And Charlotte is here, so Charlotte, if you'd like to speak to your report?
Thank you. Well, thank, first of all, good evening, everybody. It's nice to see you all, albeit not face to face. Hope you're all keeping well. You'll all be aware of my report, so obviously happy to, can you still hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, I've just had a message to say it might kick me out any minute, so I'll keep talking. And that's very unusual, I've never had that before. So basically, I've all been sending you my daily updates throughout the lockdown, so hopefully you've all found those useful and you've been passing and circulating that information on. Just a couple of things I want to advise on, to say that tomorrow evening, 5.45 till seven o'clock, Ian will be in chair. We've got our Community Network panel meeting virtually, and that's going to be focusing on speeding. We've got three guest speakers from our transport team, so we've also got a speaker talking about Operation Snap. So I think if you've not already logged in to get the details from that, let me know tomorrow and I can get Liz to send you an invite, but that should be a good meeting. And also just to update on Nettles Hill, we sent an email, I think a couple of weeks ago now, to councillor Barnes from Gary Cool in the transport team. And he's basically saying that it was, all went out to consultation and they're going to implement as you'd wished. And he just needs you to email him back, Stephen, to say, go ahead and accept it, and then they can get cracking on that. But obviously happy to take any questions on my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlotte. Has anybody got any questions for Charlotte? No, nothing at all? Okay, can I just say, Charlotte, how helpful all of your updates have been during the last four months? It's really made us feel as if we've been in the loop of what's going on at Cornwall Council. So I would like to say thank you on behalf of the council for that.
It's a pleasure and more than happy to carry on with those every day. And also, the only other thing I was going to mention very briefly was the £15,000 that had been agreed for the reopening of the High Streets. I've sent through to Peter how to claim that, so hopefully that claim will come in very soon and we'll get that paid very quickly for you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Please feel free to stay or go as you wish, Charlotte.
Okay, I'll stay for a few minutes. I've got the tea on in the background. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, item nine is to receive the town mayor's announcements. You've had a report. Has anybody got any questions? No, nothing at all?
Yes.
Oh, councillor Davidson?
Having read your report and was particularly interested in the fact that you'd worked with mayors and talked to mayors throughout Cornwall, it was interesting to see that some councils had worked right through lockdown while others had recently opened. And I wondered in view now of where we are, whether we could have a firm date when the civic centre will be open to the public and all staff back in and working together again, please.
Peter, I think that's one for you to...
All the staff are back in now. The library's been open since the beginning of July, but we won't be opening to the public, yeah.
Right, no date on that at all?
No, not at the moment, based on the guidance that we're given.
Okay.
It's no different to the library, as you well know, at the moment, it's purely the click and collect and record and refer. And that's based on the... Sorry?
No, I was thinking more of the fact that if other councils can open and let the public in, can we not operate under the same rules?
The public are coming into the vestibule area and that is the extent of it at the moment. It's no different to what other councils are doing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, has anybody else got any other questions? No, okay, that's lovely, so just to have the report noted, please. Item 10 is to confirm the minutes of 10.1, the monthly meeting of the council held on the 6th of July 2020, minutes attached. Could I have somebody to move that, please? Is that councillor Bisco?
No, I don't mute the ready thing. Yes, that's me.
And councillor Ellenbrook, is that you seconding?
Tis indeed.
Okay, can I ask the clerk to go round and ask for everybody's for, against or abstentions?
councillor Barnes?
Four.
councillor Bisco, four is proposed. councillor Bishop?
Four.
councillor Broad, your abstaining issue was at the meeting. councillor Brown?
Four.
councillor Mrs Davidson?
Four.
councillor Mrs Ellenbrook?
Probably four, as I seconded it.
As you've seconded it. Councillor Garrick is abstaining as he wasn't there. councillor Reeve?
Four.
councillor Thomas?
Four.
councillor Dragana?
Four.
Thank you, that's everybody in favour.
Okay, thank you very much. Could I just remind everybody to please mute your microphone if you're not speaking? Thank you. Item 11 is to receive the town clerk's report.
You've all got my report, just running very quickly down through the casual vacancy in Redruth North. As you'll see, it's currently been advertised with a closing date of 13th of August, which is next week. The CCTV camera in Clinton Passage, I'm just awaiting advice on when the camera can be installed. And as I responded to councillor Mrs Davidson just now, the staff are now back in the office full time and I've got them to do reports from the various teams. I don't know if anybody has got any-ish comments about the reports?
I think we'll take them one at a time, Peter. So on the activities of the facilities team, I've got councillor Bisco. You need to unmute, Henry.
Mine varies, it goes back to the last council meeting, I'm afraid, and I apologise for that. But I happened to bump into our former town crier, who tells me that, I believe, he sent in a letter to say that he would be happy to be the town crier again, but he never had a reply.
I've not seen a letter. I had it muted to me, but I've not had a letter.
You didn't have a letter? Well, he tells me he had a, he sent in a letter or something, but he never had a reply, Pete.
No, I've not seen anything. I heard, I heard the rumour, but that was it.
George would be very happy to do that again, I believe.
I will contact him.
We would have to buy him a new uniform because he's a fraction of his former self. He's lost, he's lost about four stone, bless him, and he's looking exceptionally healthy. But could, would, would you or could you give him some contact, please?
Yes, of course.
Please, and he'd be happy to do it, then we'd have a town crier back, if you'd be so kind.
Will do.
Thank you, Peter.
councillor Thomas, did you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Just to remind committee that I'd had a private conversation with George when he said that on the appointment of the new mayor, he would be delighted to accept the post, which I did pass on. But of course, in the current situation, he wouldn't have heard anything.
Thank you.
councillor Ellenbrook?
Are we commenting on the reports from the various organisations?
Yes. That's what we're doing. We are taking the facilities team.
All right, is it just the facilities? I've got a question on the library.
Yeah, I'm taking them one at a time, Barbara. So the facilities team is first. I've got something, if nobody else wants to comment on the facilities team report. Has anybody got anything? No, I was asked a question about when St Rumens Gardens will be reopening. I don't know if you're aware that actually it's currently closed. The reason for that is that there's a problem with the electrical supply box in there and we're waiting for the contractors to let us know when they'll be able to do the work. So at the moment, we're not aware of a date, but obviously it will be as soon as is practically possible. councillor Thomas?
Thank you, Chair. Just wanted to say that I think that the, whatever the proper title is, the facilities contract manager and our groundworks team have done an excellent job in terms of like social distancing. Of course, I'm particularly referring to Market Way and the Market Hall. Well done, lads.
Echoed.
Okay, has anybody else got anything on facilities?
Yes.
councillor Barnes?
Yes, on the last page, it says about allotments. Allotments seem to be very popular at present. Do we have any vacancies for the rods up there or the one at Coach Lane, do we know?
Not that I'm aware of.
All right.
Both allotments run a waiting list system, which is run by the two organisations that actually run the allotments. And they don't necessarily let us know on a regular basis how many spaces they have. I know that there was a suggestion that there were going to be some private allotments put into the town, but I don't know whether that's progressed. Does anyone else know?
There are private allotments up on Sandy Lane.
Indeed, there are.
Any ones I'm aware of.
Yes, I'm aware of that and it's run by a guy who lives just around the corner from me called Mike. I don't know quite his surname, but he's very enthusiastic about it. And he will, he's bought two, maybe three fields, I'm not sure. And he's very keen to run them and he's very attentive. And Cornwall Council have actually, he put a, what do they call, a shipping container on it. And Cornwall Council were very, they tried to put a prevention order on it or something like that. But he's buried it down low so it can't be seen and you will be seeing a retrospective planning application for it in the near future, I suspect. But he's got a heart of gold and his heart's in the right place and he wants to do something good. And I think we should support him totally.
I've got a feeling that there are some private allotments in the Tewaggi area somewhere. So I think maybe...
They are part of the Williams Trust, if I remember rightly. I'm not sure whether they're still in use at the moment or not.
No, I'm not sure either. councillor Ellenbrook?
Yes, thank you. Yes, about these allotments in Sandy Lane, what would be good is, we're currently doing a Campbell, Poole, Illog and Redruth green infrastructure strategy and allotments kind of form part of that. So what would be really useful is, if this is going to go ahead, that we formally know about it. And my only concern would be Sandy Lane is a 40 mile an hour road and I think access onto something like that could be a challenge. So I suspect that they will need to get planning permission for it. But I'm just flagging up that there's a green infrastructure work going on. And if they are going to do that, it would be useful if, I've got the contact of the person who's writing the strategy, if perhaps we could inform her, the lady who's writing the strategy, of what the plans are. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else got any questions on the facilities report? I know that there's approval granted for necessary works and expenditure. We probably need to agree that. I'm just looking to the clerk to see if he knows which specifically.
Nothing specific springs to mind. No, it's probably left over from the last meeting.
Okay. Okay, so that part of the report is then noted. We move on to the workings of the events team. Has anybody got anything they want to ask a question about or comment about on the report from the events team? councillor Ellenbrook?
I think it would be useful if we are going to go ahead with stuff for Christmas, if that information was shared with the cultural consortium, because we did when we met last week or the week before, I really forget now, Georgie was there. We did have some discussions about Christmas and it would be good if we had a bit of joint working on that. I mean, I'm just kind of casually asking the question, if there's quite a lot of stuff planned, do we actually need to have a meetings, a meeting, pardon me, of the festivals group? It's just a question, it's not a request. It's just a question, it's not a request. But I also say that I think that they've done an extremely brilliant job in very, very difficult circumstances so far this year. And well done them for the virtual work that's been going on. It's been excellent.
Okay, has anybody else got anything they want to ask about the report?
Can I just say before we leave it, ma'am, that as far as Christmas is concerned, I think members need to give serious consideration as to whether we proceed with the normal Christmas festivities or not. Particularly under the current situation, we don't know where we're going to be in three months' time. Parades and the like, I would suggest, certainly based on at the moment, are no-nos. The town is always packed for the Christmas lights. I'd hate to undo all the good work that the residents have been doing up to now.
My feeling is that the schools should be asked about how they feel about the parades. And if they feel that they don't want it to go ahead, then I think you have your answer without going any further. If they are keen that something happens, then we have to work out a way of doing something that actually allows us to accommodate the social distancing at the same time as getting them to do something. So I've got councillor Brown and then councillor Davidson.
Okay, well, I'll make sure the events team contact the schools as soon as they're back.
Okay, thank you.
I was going to make a similar suggestion, so don't worry.
Okay, councillor Davidson.
I would just like to say that I think we should try and look, I know the rulings change all the time, which makes it very, very difficult. But if we could look at what we can do, even if it means changing what we've always done this year, so that at least we look as if we're doing something positive, while still working within the guidelines. I mean, they may change by the time we get to the end of September, but there must be something we can do. But I tend to agree with Pete. I have an awful feeling the schools will not be happy with a parade, which means we've got a lot of thinking to do, I think.
You'll see from Laura's report that, I mean, I think the light should still go ahead. I don't know what members' feelings about the lights are, whether we have a switch on or not. But you'll see at certainly the bottom of the first page that Laura and the team have come up with some ideas that would fit into perhaps a more virtual Christmas.
Okay, I've got councillor Thomas and councillor Ellenbrook.
Again. Yeah, I just wanted to say that for me, Christmas has always been a bit of a fairy tale anyway. So why can't we have a virtual Christmas if nothing else?
Okay, councillor Ellenbrook.
Can I just reiterate what I said? We've got the cultural consortium that's been set up, which has discussed in very broad terms possibly what we're going to do with Christmas. So can we please, please, please make sure that we work with them? Because there are some people on that that may well be able to come up and support us in doing some stuff that's slightly different in the term.
Yeah, will do.
Councillor Barnes.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I go along with what councillor Davidson's saying, that we've got to not just think of doing it one way or another, but perhaps a mixture of the two, so that we can still keep the Christmas spirit alive as best we can in the town. Obviously, with the parades, you're going to have to work out what the children are prepared to do or the schools. But I certainly think we need to put the lights up and then just take it from there. See what else you can do and what you can, even if it's just having singers there in the street for people to, as they walk by. Or tape message. Perhaps we can have a male voice choir formed by the town council members. Or maybe not.
Thomas. You've still got your hand up, councillor Thomas.
Apologies, Chair.
Okay, councillor Bisco.
Well, I think we ought to put the lights up considering the lighting people came round in the last week or so and did an upgrade on the electrics. And I think we would go ahead with the lights, definitely. Be ashamed not to see if it worked and make sure it works.
Okay, has anybody else got anything they want to add on the report from the events team? Okay, thank you. So noted. And then the next is the Redruth Library and Information Service report. Councillor Ellenbrook.
Yeah, I'm very interested in, on their report, a lot of the questions they're getting, or they've had, the majority, have been about recycling. I'd be really interested to know exactly what people were asking. Were they just requesting recycling bins or were they asking about the removal of the recycling bays in New Car Park? I have a very specific reason for asking that question. So if somebody could share, that would be really good. But also as a user of the click and collect, that's working very well and thank God we can get library books again.
Okay, has anybody else got anything on the library's report? Councillor Barnes.
Yeah, I would like to come in and have a look around with that.
Sorry, Stephen, you cut out there. I'm not sure whether everyone else had the same issue.
I said I haven't been in to have a look around the building as yet. So I'd like to come in and have a little tour around tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Councillor Ellenbrook.
I think you will find that in actual fact, there was a video thing posted by the by the library team or by the comms team or somebody of what it looks like in there, if that's of any help. I'm sure I saw something that was posted about a week or so ago, so I think it's there. Yeah. I'd rather keep people safe and not go in for the time being, frankly.
Well, am I being kept safe or are they being kept safe from me?
They're probably being kept safe from you.
I'd agree with that as well.
Definitely being kept safe from you, Stephen.
So when are members going to be allowed in the Kremlin then?
When the guidance allows us to.
Oh, dear. Well, when will that be?
Can I just, sorry, can I just ask, has councillor Garrick just left the meeting? Or is he back in the meeting? He's back in the meeting.
Oh, he's back in now.
Okay. Can you see and hear, Colin? I just need to check.
Can I ask, where does it say in the guidance that members aren't allowed to enter the building?
The guidance stipulates what we can and can't do with people accessing public buildings. Hence why we've only got the small area open for the library at the moment. As soon as that changes, I will let you know.
Yeah, but I'm not a member of the public.
Applies to everybody.
Okay, councillor Garrick is clearly having some connection issues. And we need to wait to see whether he can re-establish his connection. So we aren't able to discuss any business or vote until we've seen whether or not he's able to do that. Henry, you've got your hand up. Is that because you want to ask a question?
Well, I've always said that they are guidelines. And guidelines are interpretable. And you interpret them as to how every premise is different. And you must interpret them to how it can work for you. And that's the way I've interpreted the guidelines.
I would like it to be pointed out where it says I'm not allowed to enter the building as a councillor.
Well, that's because you're short.
Oh, all right.
So high. We don't meet the required height requirement, Stephen.
I thought that was the four lanes measure.
Can I just point out that whilst we're not actually discussing any business, the recording is still going on at this point.
That's okay. I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, that's fine. The clerk is just trying to contact councillor Garrick.
You still have to have humour in these things, you know. And I always said when I first started with the town council, that one thing you get is my sense of humour. And that will never go away. So I'm afraid you're inflicted with it.
I like your balloons, Stephen.
Councillor Brown, have you been speaking to Colin?
I have spoken to him briefly a few days ago, yes, just to ensure that he was able to connect.
Because he contacted me through Teams. I'm trying to phone him, but I'm getting no answer now. Do you have a mobile for him?
I have a mobile for him.
Could you give him a ring? I don't have his mobile number.
It's gone straight to voicemail.
I'm not sure where he's accessing the meeting from, so I don't know.
Well, I've tried his landline, councillor, oh, councillor Garrick back to us.
Okay, councillor Garrick needs to confirm that he's able to hear and see.
I can at the moment, but I may drop out again, but.
So what we need to know, councillor Garrick, is if you drop out again, because we've had to halt the business until you can reconnect. Okay, he's leaving again.
He's had to go pick some more apples, I expect, from the orchard.
I think he's turned his mobile off so no one interrupts him while he's in his meeting.
Now he's pressing cider, he's stamping on the apples of his Somerset.
He's back. You're back with us again, councillor Garrick.
Ask the question.
Leaving again.
That's what happens in England, you know.
I think, ma'am, we need to press on and accept that he's got issues.
Okay.
I was about to suggest as we're cor, can we continue?
Yes.
But the rules state that we have to give him five minutes to try and reconnect, so that's what I tried to do.
I think he's been in and out for about the last 10 minutes.
Okay. Is there anything else on the town clerk's report?
Yes, I want to know why I can't be allowed into the building tomorrow. I am not a member of the public. I'm a member of the council.
Because I know when you come again, infecting us, Stephen.
Well, I've been tested twice. I don't know how many times you've been tested. But I've been tested twice and I've been negative. I want to know where it says I can't come into the council building.
It says in the guidance that we're using.
What does it actually say? Because you've toyed with the public and I'm not a member of the public.
Give me a ring tomorrow morning and we'll sort something out.
Rightio. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Is that the end of the town clerk's report?
Yeah.
Right. Item 12 is to receive correspondence.
You've all got the correspondence schedule. There's just the one item on there, which is the letter from Cornwall Council stating their position on the financial support for town and parish councils through this pandemic, which I hope you all had the opportunity to read. And it looks like we may be getting some form of finance back from Cornwall Council. I know this is something that, we're fortunate, we're not in the position where we have vast amount of incomes that other councils have with car parks and the like. But it still hasn't had an impact on us. And I'd like to think we will be able to get some, if not all of the, for instance, the rentals back and things like that.
Councillor Brown.
Yes, sorry, very quick point of order. I've just messaged councillor Garrick via Teams. He has got back to me and said he's happy for us to continue the meeting, should he flitter in and out. Sorry.
Councillor Bisco. Muted, Henry.
Looking at the letter from Cornwall Council, I had a very interesting conversation with Geoff Penhaligon on last Thursday, which I would very much like to discuss with the town clerk in private. Because I think there are issues that may be of concern. When I went in the office, there was steam coming out of his ears. And I think it may have some significance. And I'd like to have a discussion with the town clerk in private on that one, to advise him of my conversation.
Give me a ring tomorrow.
Yeah, I understand that Cornwall's council's fluidity with the reserves isn't that great. And I shouldn't go spending any money you think you might be getting from Cornwall Council, because they might have to put a stop to everything like that.
That's what I just said, Stephen.
Yeah.
I'll message you privately if you wish. But at the moment, I don't think it's a subject that needs to be aired on air.
Okay.
Surprising what people tell their window cleaner, you know.
Item 13, councillor Mrs Ellenbrook puts the motion that this council applies for CIL funding to improve signage in areas to and on the mineral tramway trails around Redruth, Carnmath to the town centre and if possible, on the Great Flat Loaf and Cornwall Gold Centre to town centre. Councillor Ellenbrook.
Thank you, ma'am. The reason for me putting this is I became aware that this funding was available and that we could actually apply for it. And I think given the current situation where we want to encourage people to walk and particularly considering what Will and Hetty are trying to do with their Redruth walks, it seems to me that better signage would be a good thing for us to apply for. My suggestion would be that we work with the HAS team on this because they have some money in their budget for signage. But I just feel the more we can share where our places are that people can get to, the better it is for everybody. It's not a commitment for the town council to do anything. It's just simply, can we have the approval of the council that we can work on this as a plan? Thank you.
Okay, has anybody got anything they would like to ask or say? Councillor Thomas.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'd like to second that motion, if only for the reasons I explained during Mr Tremaine's presentation and my ongoing soapbox issue. Thank you very much.
Councillor Barnes.
Yeah, I'd like to agree with this. I think it's a good idea. Let's see if we can get some money before somebody else comes in and takes the pot.
Councillor Thomas. You still have your hand raised, councillor Thomas. Do you want to come back?
No, beg your pardon, Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else? Did you want to make that a proposal then, Barbara? And Ian is happy to second it.
Yes, please.
Okay, could the clerk, is anybody? Okay, could the clerk, is anybody going to object or abstain? Do you please make yourself known?
And then I'll come round and kill you.
Okay, I, I think that we can say that that's unanimous.
Sorry, that was frivolous. I do beg your pardon there.
Yeah, sorry, I just said, okay, this is recorded.
Okay, so that's carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Item 14 is to consider and approve the payment of homeworking expenses to employees during lockdown. See report attached, Peter?
All got my report. I hope it's fairly straightforward and that members will support it.
Councillor, councillor Brown?
Um, duly proposed, I think it's a standard thing and it's a necessity, necessity as much as anything, so.
Somebody second it, please? Councillor Davidson, thank you. Is there going to be anybody that either wants to object or abstain from the proposal?
I'm going to abstain from the proposal.
Okay, councillor Bisco would like to abstain. Is there anybody else? Okay. So that's carried, thank you. Item 15 is to consider requests for financial assistance.
You've all got the schedule and the various applications. The first one on the schedule is a request from Paul Junior Football Club, who are requesting a thousand pounds towards match kits, tracksuits, training kit, warm-up kits. And bear in mind that they are a relatively new club, so they haven't provided any accounts other than what you've got, uh, what, what you can see attached.
Councillor Barnes? You need to unmute, Stephen.
I think as it's outside of our boundary, we shouldn't actually give them anything.
I'm, I agree. Anybody else got anything they would like to say?
Agreed.
I know, I know members are agreeing with that and under the old system, if it was outside the, outside the parish boundary, uh, we certainly wouldn't consider it, but I, can I remind you that under the uh, powers of general competence, you do have the ability to give, to make awards to anybody. I'm not suggesting you want to at the moment, but that's just a reminder for you.
Councillor Mrs Davidson.
Judy.
And councillor Davidson.
I still think, as councillor Barnes brought up, that it is outside and we know that the rules have changed, but given the financial dilemma that all councils are in at the moment, and we have to surely look at our own patch first, so I would not be in favour.
Councillor Thomas?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Um, I think we ought to apply the criteria that we always apply, which is how many of Redruth residents benefit? So, in other words, how many people from Redruth actually play for Paul or whatever its proper title is? Thank you.
Councillor Ellenbrook?
Um, just to say that whatever our decision, if we do decide not to support this, um, I think they need to have a proper explanation of, of why, which would be that it's, you know, we have these, these facilities that we're supporting in our own area. Um, but I do think we need to, to say that.
Councillor Bishop?
Yeah, obviously football, as you all know, is my background. Uh, I was obviously reading their reports. They'd be more than welcome to come and join Redruth United Football Club and I could get in touch with their chairman and obviously not take any money from the council. The membership money that they're proposing could obviously support them playing for Redruth United, so whether we, whether Redruth United Football Club can help them and get in touch and obviously get the, get the people playing still, we're more than happy to help.
That's very generous of you.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else got anything they want to add?
True.
So I appear to have a proposal from councillor Barnes that we give them nothing, which is seconded by councillor Davidson. Have I got that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I think we probably need to go round, Peter, and, and just see what everybody wants to vote on this, please.
Okay, councillor Barnes is for because you're proposing. Councillor Bisco?
Four. Or again, well, I, I don't want to give them any money.
The proposal is not to give the. Councillor Bishop?
You're muted.
You're still muted. That's it. You four.
Oh, sorry, I'm on it now, four.
Councillor Broad?
Four.
Councillor Brown?
The four.
Mrs Davidson's four, she's seconded it. Councillor Mrs Ellenbrook?
Four.
Councillor Garrick back with us, no. Councillor Page, no. Councillor Reeve? Are you back now? Are you now, Cathy?
Yeah, yeah, I saw F4.
Thank you. Councillor Reeve? Councillor Thomas?
Against, for the reasons I stated.
And councillor Triguna?
Four.
Thank you, that's carried.
Can I just ask councillor Bishop to get in touch with them and see what assistance he can offer them, as he's kindly said that he would do that? Thank you. Can I just remind all, all councillors again to mute their microphones, please? So with the second request now?
Second request is for the one that Mr Tremaine referred to earlier on, which is Redruth Walking Festival, who won a thousand pounds, but some of it will be in kind towards a walking festival to help people to reconnect to the town and surrounding areas and to meet new people in the local area. And you've all had the opportunity to question him earlier on.
Do I have anybody that wants to say anything or some proposals? Councillor Thomas?
Yes, Chair. Um, I've always found walking a fairly inexpensive pastime. Um, so whilst I, I vigorously support the initiative, um, I would propose that we offer them £500. Thank you.
Okay. Councillor Bisco and councillor Barnes, you need to unmute, Henry.
I would second that proposal.
Councillor Barnes?
Yeah, I would go along with it for the same reason, really.
Okay, so we have a proposal for £500, which has been seconded. Does anybody want to make an alternative proposal?
An amendment, please.
An amendment, I do beg your pardon. No, okay, so.
Sorry, yes.
Councillor Ellenbrook?
I, I think that we should give them the whole thousand, frankly, but.
Okay, so uh, we take, is, is somebody?
No, no, is somebody seconding? Sorry.
Somebody going to second councillor Ellenbrook's proposal? Is that councillor Brown?
Uh, yeah, more than happy to, actually.
So we have an amendment that has been proposed by councillor Ellenbrook of a thousand pounds, which has been seconded by councillor Brown. So we need to vote on the amendment first, that we give them the full thousand pounds. So would the clerk please ask everybody for their vote?
Councillor Barnes?
Against.
Councillor Bisco?
Against.
Councillor Bishop?
Four.
Councillor Broad?
Against.
Councillor Brown? Four.
Four.
Councillor Mrs Davidson?
Four.
Councillor Mrs Ellenbrook is for because you proposed it. Councillor Garrick's not here. Councillor Page?
Against.
Councillor Reeve?
Four.
Councillor Thomas?
Against.
And councillor Triguna?
Four.
Right, unless Abby disagrees with me, I've got five for and five against. Can you confirm, Abby? Is she there?
Yeah, I was counting. I've got six for.
Yeah, so did I.
My apologies, I missed one. You're right, the amendment has been carried.
Okay, thank you very much, councillors. Um, so Mr Tremaine and Mr Bevington, uh, the thousand pounds has been agreed.
No, no, not yet. We need to vote, we need to know, take that as a substantive proposal.
All right, okay, let's do that again then. So, so now that the original proposal has fallen and we have the substantive proposal, it's now that we give them a thousand pounds, which is proposed by councillor Ellenbrook and seconded by councillor Brown, we need to go round again then.
Councillor Barnes?
Against.
Councillor Bisco?
Against.
Councillor Bishop?
Four.
Councillor Broad?
Against.
Councillor Brown?
Four.
Councillor Mrs Davidson?
Against.
Councillor Mrs Ellenbrook, you're for it because you proposed it. Yeah, councillor Page?
Against.
Councillor Reeve?
Four.
Councillor Thomas?
Against.
And councillor Triguna?
Four.
I'm not quite sure, but Abby, can you confirm? I've got five, four and six against.
Yes.
Yes, it was councillor Mrs Davidson changed her vote on that one.
So that, that, that substantive proposal has fallen.
I'd like to move another motion.
You can do, because the last one fell.
I'll move a, a motion of £501.
I will second that, Chair.
I'll third it.
I'll fourth it.
I'll fifth it.
Do you want me to go round, ma'am?
Is anybody going to vote against this proposal?
Oh dear.
I'm going, I'm going to abstain, ma'am, because I think that is utterly ridiculous, sorry.
I'll have to say I agree with you.
I'm, I'm gonna go round, ma'am.
Okay.
So this is a proposal for £501. Councillor Barnes? For because you proposed it. Councillor Bisco?
Four.
Councillor Bishop?
I'll abstain, because I agree with Miss Ellenbrook.
Councillor Broad?
Four.
Councillor Brown?
I agree, I agree, it's ridiculous, but four.
Councillor Mrs Davidson?
Four.
Councillor Mrs Ellenbrook is abstaining. Councillor Page?
Four.
Reeve?
Abstain.
Thomas?
Four.
And Triguna?
Abstain.
That's carried.
So, £501 is what they've been granted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, item 16 is to receive and approve the schedule of accounts.
You've all got the schedule of accounts. Many questions, councillor Barnes?
Uh, no, I'll, I'll move that.
I'll second it.
I'll third it.
Is anybody going to either abstain or vote against? No, I don't think so, thank you. Okay, so that's carried. Item seventeen. I, I.
Mrs Davidson's got her hand up.
Good hand up. Can I, I'd just like to say that I will leave the meeting now. Okay.
Entirely up, entirely up to you.
Yep.
No, she should.
Four, part two, thank you.
Okay.
Bye.
Bye, Judy.
Bye, Judy.
Item seventeen, to exclude the present subject from the meeting for the remaining item of business if their presence should be prejudicial to the public interest by virtue of the confidential nature of the subject, employee terms and conditions, and on the grounds such as involve the likely disclosure of exempt information as defined in part number 12A of the 1972 Local Government Act. Would somebody move this, please?
I will.
Councillor Barnes, somebody second it, please. Councillor Thomas, is that you seconding?
Yeah, I'll happily second, second it, Chair, but I have to leave the room for a few moments. Comfort break.
Okay.
Don't go yet, councillor Thomas.
What? Just wait, second, please.
Right, is there, we've moved and seconded and.
Yeah, is everybody in favour? Is there anyone going to abstain or object?
No.
Right, what I need you to do now is to leave this meeting and rejoin on the second invitation that you were sent. And we will reconvene in two minutes.
Two minutes, you're joking, more like 20.
I may struggle on that. I'll try my best, I might struggle.
Me too.
My, my phone is switched on.
Paul, if you go to the calendar where we looked before and see the second meeting invitation, you should just be able to click on it.
Okay, I did my best.
Okay.
Me too.
In a moment.